Okay, it is 2:06. We'll call the meeting to order, special meeting on... Special meeting, July 23rd, 2025, 2:06 PM. And please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Sue?
Here.
Lori?
Here.
Trudy?
Here.
Laura here, John absent. We still have a quorum.
Conflict of interest statement? Done? Public comment on agenda items. No public comment. Approval of meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. House of workers?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, sorry.
Sue, is your microphone on? Thanks. Approval of previous minutes? Any changes to the previous minutes protections? Nope. And we have a motion for approval of the previous minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion? Me.
Oh, you, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Trudy.
Trudy. Okay, reports, bills.
Invoice register in the meeting packet shows there's 19 invoices and a total of $35,142.04 to be paid.
I have a question. Melissa Baring Tobias, is that a DDA check? Or is that from the township? Is that music?
Cindy, I believe it.
I'm trying to find it. Take one second.
I think, did you get the updated report, Sue?
Ah, that's what I was looking for. Let me see, $34,642.
You probably don't have it. Here. We had an updated report, so Melissa, that's for DDA, right?
Yes. Okay, that wasn't on here. Okay. Yep, that's DDA.
Do we approve the DDA checks?
No, but it just happens to be on the invoice register.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments on the invoice register?
Motion to pay the bills.
Support?
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Old Business, Plant Moran.
Okay, so I want, let's see, it's on your packet. I have an email attached from Rob Booth. And he put the statement in there. He said that should be the only thing added to the engagement letter. And during our conversation, he even stated that Plant Moran is an excellent company. So if you look at the engagement letter on the first page, three quarters of the way down, they said it was in the other, the original engagement letter. It was just on a different page. So I had them move it to the front and bold it out on the concern about the termination.
Well, if you look at the email from Rob, there's a conflict.
Where?
Either party can't terminate this agreement, and this says either party can. So I think that was a typo by Rob.
That was a typo.
Yeah.
I thought that was, when you said can't, that was on the Plant Moran one that needed to be corrected.
Yeah, no, that's a typo.
So there, Plant Moran's not putting a timeframe on it. We could...
We can terminate it anytime. They can terminate us at any time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So is there going to be a motion before we discuss?
I'll make a motion to enter into the agreement with Plant Moran.
A second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion. I was of the understanding that this letter was discussed with, the revision of this letter was discussed with Plant Moran and Laura and Lori. Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
No, you're correct. We, I met with them and I talked to them about my expectations. We didn't really get into the detail nitty gritty of all that because Laura had already sent that ahead. But it was all the stuff that we talked about at the meeting to change.
Okay. So my question has to do with the under scope of services. The second sentence, created under the direction and supervision of Ms. Laura Decker. Are you not to be involved at all? Even though there's to be bank reconciliations involved in audit prep and close up year end accounting?
Laura had said to them, you need to add Lori Smith, the treasurer with this, because the two of us are working together on this, but...
I also made the comment to them, and they also agreed that once this was taken care of, and when I replied back to them, that I would be giving them Lori's contact information because she's the treasurer. She'll be working on this as well. And they said, that's great.
So you're going to run point on this. Are they going to be working when you're in the office? When, when is Plant Moran going to be working on this?
They have access to the computer that we're going to set up for them whenever, because nobody else will be able to use that computer once we get them set up on it.
I understand. My question is, for the questions that they may have, how available are you to them?
You know how my availability runs, but Lori's going to be available too. She's another point of contact for them, so it'll be both of us.
So are your days going to alternate? I know you have a set schedule each month.
Yeah, and I think that my schedule would be the same as it is Tuesday, Wednesday, and then after hours Monday, Thursday, Friday, and then I'm sure Plant Moran doesn't work on the weekend. But I'm here on the weekend. But if they're going to have to, you know, Florida's not available, then they'll have to use...
See, both of those are put over on all emails, so I'm sure that they've done this before.
Um, my concern is that we not take out the computer that's in the office that Rachel's been working on.
We have a laptop we were, that we used to use for elections. I like to use that one because Rachel does, I said that out loud. Rachel does use that computer by Karen quite a bit.
Yes, exactly. And she's making headway too, so. I, I don't, I mean, if, if come August 15th or whatever, when we finally get the letter from Gaybridge of what we need to start shipping, I, I think we're going to be this first line item. I don't think they're going to have to worry about that.
I don't want to cross it out just because they're not going to know until they get in there and start digging around. I don't want to project what they're going to worry about until they get in there.
Well, like Rachel said, some of this stuff, she wouldn't be spinning her wheels on unless she was able to ask Chris or I. You know, like, what about this? I couldn't find. I'm like, oh, that was, you know...
We still have that $22,000 in our own shirt that isn't, can't, we don't know what to do with it.
How'd it get there? Who made the journal entry?
Not me.
I did, because neither, it was actually a $27,000 transaction that I showed everybody the deposits and credits, and then there was one last one. There was nothing to put it against, nothing to clear it against. So, and it was put in there. And because Gaybridge, that's not their job, and it's in, Neil was no longer helping. So I, I knew it was something that needed to be corrected, but I didn't know how.
Okay, I have a list of questions.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I struggle to understand what has occurred in the, in, let me back up. At the July 8th regular board meeting, our treasurer reported that, quote, "Most of the 17 bank accounts have been reconciled," unquote. I believe that to be true. By that, my understanding of the reconciliation process is that the deposits for most of the accounts have been reconciled. Dare I go out on a limb and say that the expenditures, the EFTs checks have as well been reconciled, which is in the clerk's office at general ledger. Where are we with regard to the monthly reconciliations of the general ledger?
You have to ask them. I haven't...
But I'm asking specifically about the general ledger, the expenditures. Are you doing, what part of the reconciliation process, there's a checks and balances there?
Right. Rachel and Lori have been doing them all.
Okay. So how has, how has this occurred? I mean, who's working in the general ledger?
All of us. All of the accounts affect the general ledger.
I understand that. Who is writing, who has the authority to write journal entries in the general ledger?
Supposed to be me, but other people are doing them.
I also have statutory, I also...
Not the general ledger. There's, there's a general ledger or a journal entry report that's been run, and there's so many pages of them being done.
Okay, when you say you, who else?
What do you mean?
Who else is writing journal entries?
Lori, Chris. Well, you haven't really been doing any lately.
Now since you said you want to be on the general ledger.
And Sue's done a few, but I haven't really, I've done like a couple.
Okay. Could that be part of the, the mess that we have, that we have all these different hands in the pie?
Possibly. But at the beginning, with what we walked into, a lot of them were necessary.
Well, I'll grant you that, but we've been here now since January on our own. What can we do moving forward? The mess that we have is we've inherited and we've, we've added to. That, that's my opinion.
I think that's very unfair.
And why?
Because 90%, it still comes into play later, trying to get things cleared up. I really thought that come January, February, March, it would be a breeze. But it's not. As I stated before, the pool account is a difficult account.
Yes.
And any help that they can get is, is needed.
Well, I know since Rachel's taking it over, she's found a few things that we need to change procedurally, especially with like the EFTs, because they hit the general ledger different than they hit the bank. And I know like for the, all the mistakes I made in the tax account, one of those was the fact that I wasn't following what happened in the bank. So now when I'm receiving things in, if they, I'm making sure it matches up. So that's something that if we can get that fixed, that we'll check off that. And then if, now that I know how to do deposits where you group stuff together, that'll make that much easier. So we've learned stuff.
Right.
Yeah, we're still learning.
Yeah, we're still learning, but I mean, Rachel's helping by looking through.
Absolutely.
With her...
And as far as never making general ledger journal transactions, no, there will be. Moving money from one bank account to another bank account.
Doesn't need a journal entry.
Cash receipting is not the right way to do it.
Yes, it is the right way to do it. I just talked to Neil Hammerbacher, and he said, Lori, use the, the, the modules that BSNA provides you. So I did the move the money. I was going to receipt it in. I didn't get a chance because I got pulled on something else. So Laura did a journal entry, which was fine, but then one of the journal entries, it was to a different bank account. When we were reconciling the bank account, then I just reversed that and I received it in through cash receipt.
You need to talk to me. You don't, as far as reversing a journal entry that I've done. Just come and talk to me.
Sure.
At least point it out to me. Let me know.
Yeah.
Walk me through it.
And that was the dollar amount that was, I was told that was a good dollar amount. It's not a good dollar amount.
No, it was a great dollar amount.
That 15,000?
No, the 10 and the 6.
That's the one for the Mason brothers and the one that you had me do.
Oh, okay, okay, different, okay. Yeah, it was great. I mean, it was fine. I'm just saying we can use cash, I can move money and receive it in and not have to do a journal entry. And we can do EFTs and not have to do a journal entry. Everything can be done within BSNA without making journal entries. Like Neil said, you maybe do two or three journal entries at the end, close out your month, but, you know, I'm guilty.
Year end too.
Yeah.
You're going to have, at the year end.
Right. And I'm guilty of making journal entries because I didn't know that I could write a check out of accounts payable.
Well, you shouldn't be. You can't.
She, she should be. Through my tax account.
Yes.
Oh, not, yeah.
Through your, all you.
I'm not touching any, I'm really not touching anything that's Lori's responsibility.
Yes, yeah, okay. I thought when you were saying EFTs, there was something else, but...
No.
When it comes to, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, right. And if I, I receive in money, like for the sewer, and then I give her a copy of the receipt so she knows money's in the right bank account before she writes the checks, so we don't get into that years ago.
And I always come and ask you.
Right, I know. We work, well, we, yeah, we, we need to talk more.
Well, we already have our dates set every week, so spend time together.
Well, I think you've answered the next question that I had was, what can we do? What can we put into place to prevent some of this as we move forward? And it sounds like that is being done. We're understanding, starting to understand the modules a bit more. Having sat through a very informative and helpful BSNA training last week, is there is there one that perhaps you and Laura could sit in together and then...
We've already discussed it.
That, I mean, I found it very helpful, the one that we sat in.
I talked, Laura about it too.
So...
All right, so Laura, you and I have agreed that I'm not, I'm not going to do a journal entry or reverse one until you and I talk. You're not going to journal, do a journal entry until you and I talk. We're going to work together to make sure...
That's why we're setting up every Wednesday is we're going to, Laura and Lori time.
Okay.
Because we're not in the office at the same time all the time.
No, but if you're in and I'm not, email you, what, maybe a note where you need me to look into or things.
Well, I still have a problem with the first bullet point. I did go back to the discussion we had last month. And I see that we did add the monthly bank reconciliations through June 30, 2025 for the pool account.
Well, it'll be as needed. If it's not needed, they're not going to do it.
The phone call that Lori sat in with us, they even said, if there's stuff that they can show us how to do or tell us how to do so we don't get charged, they will absolutely do that.
Yes, I forgot that point. Yes, they did say that. But I said, I don't want to pay for something that we can do ourselves. And they agreed. We don't want to be doing things that you can do yourself.
Assist with the general ledger accounting through June 30, 2025. What does that, define that?
I'm, I'm preparing it for the audit. The ledger needs some work.
What do you mean, it needs some more, just...
Year end, fiscal year end.
So would that not be included under bullet point three and four?
Maybe they split it out for us just so we knew.
Let them just take a look and see where it's at, Trudy.
They can.
Forecast what's going on if they haven't even been in there yet. They have no idea what mess they're walking into.
Or if they miss, if there is. I, I mean... I think, to me, it's...
And, well, I have not had a chance to read all of this. Is everyone else, and when did we get this letter?
July 1st.
This revised one was July?
No, the revised one was last week, because I told them we were going to schedule a special meeting. Lori was included. She was in that, in the room. This is the result.
So we got this last week, but we didn't get it until today.
I think they're all week.
Yeah. Did you get copied on this letter, the revised letter?
I did not. Well, it's different with it besides the person. I only have the July 1.
Well, the first letter we got in July was not complete. We received pages one and three and two and four.
That was, I'm listening when we printed it.
So the only thing changed is this lease note?
Well, it was already in there. They said it was on a different page, so I asked them to bring it up front.
Yeah, like, so Sue, if you look at page one, the July 1, we received that in the meeting packet, but page two, we didn't get. We just got page three.
Yeah, it's just the way it printed. That's my fault.
Oh, I know, I know. I just wanted her to understand, you know, what we were looking at at the time of the meeting, that, you know...
Except that's what I'm saying though, is...
I've not had time to read the whole thing.
Take a 10-minute recess, or whatever.
Okay, 10-minute recess.
Is that how it goes?
Can we go ahead and do Tammy's?
I'm sorry. Yeah, let's go ahead and do Tammy's. We'll take a little...
That's a whole different...
Yeah.
All right, so...
Agreed.
So under old business, lift station two, if you recall from, I think, June, we had a problem there. We had rags in it and the pump was behaving badly and we, Tammy worked hard with Russ and Jennifer and I don't know who all to figure out what was going on. We called in KEO to clean it out. And if you recall at the June meeting, we approved having the flan, there were two flanges that needed to get rebuilt, and it would have required the confined spaces team. And we approved a maximum to be paid of $17,285, and that was for two flanges, plus the confined spaces team of $9,000. Since then, Detroit Pump has come through with a estimate?
Yes.
And it's somewhat more than what we authorized, but it does include two new pumps. New rails, pump brackets, the estimate is there. And their installation team is trained in this confined spaces, so there's no separate fee for that. So I'm bringing it back to the board for further explanation by Tammy, which is why she's here, to explain what happened in the past with the pump. And, and I'm asking the board to, to look at this second proposal, which we had hoped to have in June, which we did not have at the time. So you want to go ahead and, so let, let me see what... All right, I, I don't, I don't want to make the motion yet, because I want Tammy to be able to explain what's going on with these things. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Am I good here?
You're good there, as long as everyone can hear you.
Yep, so the lift station's been giving us a lot of bits of Broody Road. We've been pulling a course our hair out with it because we couldn't quite figure out what was going on. And finally, we were able to see it happen. So what was happening is when lift station number one comes on down by Burger King, it is our big station. It pumps up to the plant, or the Broody Road lift station comes into that same line. It's only a two-inch line that comes into our big six-inch line from the other pump. So when the big station is on, our little station doesn't have enough force to be able to pump against that pressure. So it was backfeeding back down the pump, and you could just see it kind of swirling around in the wetland. Like, the pumps are on, but why aren't we pumping anything? So what happened after 10 years of this operating this way is those pumps sit on a flange, basically a base. So they go down a rail system, sit on a flange that makes a seal, which then allows it to be pumped into the pipe, up to the plant. Well, that force and that pressure after 10 years of it, trying, that station trying to come on with number one, it blew the bottom seals out in the flange. So those pumps will not sit right and not seal in that lift station now. So we do have a temporary bypass pump in there right now until we get this fixed. Originally, we looked at, what is it going to, we had them come down, what is it going to cost for these flanges, these bases, the seals? And they weren't cheap. They're $4,100 a piece. Plus you got, someone has to get down in there in the dangerous with water coming in at them and confined space entry and all this. So that's what got approved. We've been trying to research, talk to neighboring systems like City Petoskey, Herbert Springs Sewer Authority, other systems that have similar lift stations that deal with the same thing. And they have seen it happen in the past as well. Their suggestion was if you go with the old stuff, was what we originally were going to do, you could put like a thrust block or something under there when we put the new flanges in, so it won't allow that flexing to happen. Then the other option we came up with and talked to a lot of people about is we can change out the system, the different pumps. So Detroit Pump is a, one of the bigger pump suppliers in our area. They have a professional lift station team. They were able to do us a quote for two new pumps, which would go on their own rail systems, a better sealed system on the bottom of them, so they won't blow out. They're a little bit bigger pump, so it would be a five horsepower pump versus a three horsepower, which will give it more oomph to get our flow up. And they, the pumps themselves cost less. So the pumps, the ones that Detroit Pumps quoted us are Piranha pumps. They're easier to get a hold of, a lot more readily to get one next day to us. They cost about $5,000 versus $7,000 for the ones that we currently have. And the ones we currently have are only a three horsepower pump. So we can, in the future, it would save money with, when we have to have extra product on the shelf or need to replace a pump that way as well. So I really like the Piranha pumps. West Travers uses them. Say Petoskey has used them. West Travers actually, and Herbert Springs Sewer Authority has been switching all their stuff over to the Piranhas, just because they have been so much more reliable and they're easier to get and a lot more affordable than a lot, some of the other ones that are out there. After we kind of figured that out, we got that quote coming in from Detroit Pump. It is $33,824. That is two brand-new pumps, two new rail systems, and the guys doing the labor of installing them.
Okay, that's...
Okay, that's true.
It includes... It's everything together. There's no extra pumps, though.
Right.
If we went this route, the existing pumps that are in there still have life in them and can be used at the lift station on Club Road by Big B Coffee. Because that station's a little bit different than all the other small stations and has the bigger pump, a little bit bigger pumps in it. So those pumps will be able to be put on the shelf and we can clean them up, make sure they're good to go, and they can be used in the future at a different station.
Is that the Windmiller?
The Windmiller is the next one. So after all our operator research and talking to people and Erin Norby with Performance and getting everybody's input on this, we did come up with a great idea that we think, and we have... Say Petoskey's had to do this. We have OmniSite GuardAll programming at those two main lift stations. We can upgrade that software that would allow those two stations to communicate back and forth together, which would allow us to program that one, Station One and Two can't run at the same time. So it also would protect the life of those pumps and the equipment down in that lift station, so this doesn't happen again in the future. And that quote, I believe we have, was it round...
492723.
So that quote from Windmiller for the OmniSite upgrade and allowing those two stations to go together, I would like to propose doing that either way the board approves. If we stick with the old flanges and get the old existing stuff replaced, or if we upgrade the station to these better pumps, a little bit more forceful pump, a more economical solution to pumps in the future, we... I would like to have that programming updated regardless of which way we went. For that, I think, would help protect the asset of those lift stations.
Okay.
So to go back what we approved in June, is that the $17,000 plus the $9,000, is it?
What you approved it was for the flanges, which is $8,000.
Okay.
Plus, we allotted it some for KEO to get down there and do the work.
Right, okay.
And that does not include... We... Either way, we don't have an extra pump on the shelf right now for that station. So if we go that way, the original way, $17,000, we still have to buy a $7,000 pump to have on the shelf as a back.
Which we're... Yeah, so then we... It would be 24.
Yep.
But with the same with the Detroit pump, it's the $33,000 plus for an additional one is an additional tax.
And we could... These would be two new pumps. They will be under warranty. We can't... They have them in stock on shelf. I can get them almost next day. So if one did fail, they would be under warranty if we could... If we wanted to wait and put it in our budget for next year to buy that extra pump for that station.
And by taking the two pumps, replacing the two pumps with these new ones, we have two spare on the shelf for smaller...
For the Big B Coffee station.
Okay, so we still are gonna have some extra on the shelf by doing this, okay.
Is Big B Coffee Lift Station the only one that those, the current, the...
Those bigger ones will go in, yeah.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, not sure how to make the motion. Any other questions?
How much is in the RRI account?
I did not look. My bad.
Come on, Chris.
$80,000?
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
The difference in the two, okay, the 17 plus the 7, which gives us one pump on the shelf, the difference is $9,539, and that gives us two pumps on the shelf and a much better... A system that can easily, if it goes down, we can quickly repair it.
Correct.
Where if we stick with the old stuff, it's gonna be longer to be able to get it fixed and get it back up and back in.
And the flanges for the old stuff are still in back order.
Okay.
And we will not, if we keep that order, we're not going to stay until after August 7th sometime.
I did think we were... If you go with these new pumps?
And we won't need the new flanges because they'll pump... The new pumps that are coming with the Detroit pump, it's all new flanges, rails, everything.
Okay.
But Lori, this does not, still does not give us one for the shelves?
Yeah.
If we go with the Detroit, which is fine.
Well, not one for the shelf for the... For the stuff we're placing.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew that, yeah.
What did I say? Lift station have two pumps down in it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, my... Okay, yeah.
Two new pumps, okay.
So it'll be two new pumps under warranty, which would allow us to kind of push back ordering that extra pump until next year.
Is it a one-year warranty on those Detroit pumps?
They will do a two-year on those pumps. And it's a one-year limited, I should say, two-year limited, one-year almost a full guarantee, two-years of the limited. So if it's something that's really weird, like electrical fitting or something, they may have to send it off and see if they will approve it or not, but...
All right, let's think about... Any other questions? Okay, think about how we want to make this motion.
Take back the previous motion?
Yeah, I'm thinking, do we want to rescind the motion that approved payment of the two flanges and the confined spaces installation team, which totaled $17,285.70 that was approved at the June 10, 2025 meeting? I don't want to do it all wrong together. So we can rescind the June 10, 2025 motion regarding the pumps? And approve the purchase...
Our motion to approve?
Motion to approve purchase of the Detroit pumps. And motion... Motion to approve the communications between lift station one and two. So that's the motion. Chris, did you get all that?
No, but you have it written down.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so that... Do you want me to restate the motion? Motion to rescind the June 10, 2025 approval regarding the Malin estimate. Motion to rescind that motion, motion to approve the purchase of Detroit Pump estimate as provided in the amount of $33,824, which is for pumps, labor and equipment. And, excuse me, and motion to approve the communications reprogramming with Windmiller and OmniSite between lift stations one and two. Do we have support?
I support that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Is there gonna be a problem at all with the canceling with... Who was it?
Malin.
Malin.
No, I can handle that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask you though, are we still looking at an August timeframe on that Detroit pump? But you said she had it on the shelf.
Yeah, I told her, you guys, we have a board meeting today and we'll let her know as soon as she gets my okay that we'll be ordering. It'll be scheduled probably the week of the 14th, around there. Is what they have us penciled in, just in case we were kind of approved, so.
Okay.
Can I put an additional motion on there that this be paid out of the RRI account?
Because we really want to get it done before Labor Day weekend.
Oh, yes. Do you want to add that to this one, or can it be a standalone?
It can be a standalone.
In our room in our July 4th weekend.
Oh, yeah, that was wild.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're... That's your motion?
Yeah, that we...
And I'll lend support to that, so to make payment for that RRI. Questions on that?
For both the Omni and the pumps?
Communication?
I don't think the communications, just correct, is it?
So just the...
Yeah, just the Detroit pump.
Detroit pump.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so proposal, motion is to pay the Detroit pump bid out of the RRI account. Proposed motion made by Sue, set support by Trudy. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Thanks, Tammy. Let's see, road brining. So as we all remember, we budgeted for two brining this year. Mother Nature has not worked well with us. She's not playing nice. We received a lot of rain. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
When we did the first brining in June...
18.
18. So it didn't take in some places and we're noticing a lot of dust. So the proposal is to re-brine all the roads or put a second application on. It'll be a center run only, as I understand it. Right now, it's planned for August 5th, weather permitting. And a give or take a day or two, I think, is the way they handle that. The first brining in June was $22,522. We budgeted two brining's at $25,000 apiece. I suspect this will come in less than that first brining because it's a center run, but it's my first road deal with brining. So I guess I should have looked back last year to see what that second brining cost was. So my motion is to approve brine, a second brining on all roads in Tuscarawatch Township, a center run only, planned on or about August 5th, weather permitting. That's my motion. Do we have support?
Sure, I would support that. I do have a question.
Sure.
You might not know this. I don't... Is the... A full road brine the first time and always a center run the second time?
That's my understanding.
I've heard this since I've been here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe someone else can help me. It's edge to edge, the first one, correct? And then the second one is just like a swipe down the middle?
Okay.
I think the last time, the last time that we did it, when I was in the office, we did edge to edge both times.
Okay.
We had to do edge to edge to both times.
Okay.
Because they grade.
Yeah, that's right. They do grade.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I don't have a... We don't have a definitive answer on that.
That's all right.
Okay.
Curious.
Other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And cleaning service, we... Kelsey and I, our library director, met with Ellen August, who's been our cleaner for some time through Classic Cleaning. We went over her duties and changed some, increased some, made suggestions. She was very receptive to the changes. Ellen indicated that the rate, oh, her hourly rate of $15 an hour had not changed since 2016. She is also picking up an extra day as needed, and then she's gonna pick up the, with the new flooring out of this back exit from the library and from the conference room and the stairwell and the hallway in the lower level. With that, that all has new flooring, so she'll take care of that as well. So the proposal is that we increase her, the rate of reimbursement for cleaning, cleaning from $15 an hour to $20 an hour to begin this week with her cleaning services. The financial impact, you can see there, again, this cost is shared 50/50 with the library. So these, this financial impact of an increase of $5 an hour, which is approximately 60 hours... Excuse me. $60 a week or approximately $3,121 annually. Those are the gross increases. Township share would be 50% of that. So my motion is to change, to approve the rate of hourly rate of reimbursement to Classic Cleaning from 15 an hour to 20 an hour to begin this week, July 21, 2025.
I'll support that.
Okay, any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let me take a... Let's take a five-minute recess since it's late. Give us a moment to read this letter, Plant Moran, and we'll come back. Okay, so I'm sorry I'm late. We are back in session. Thank you for that, knowing me to read this letter. Okay, so Laura, will you please restate your motion?
I'm making the motion that we sign the engagement letter and send it over to engage Plant Moran for CPA help to prepare for the audit.
And is there support?
Yeah, I support it, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Comments, discussion, additional discussion? Again, I will go on the record as saying I would be more comfortable with having had Laura and Lori listed in the letter. I'm...
Well, so if they discuss that, we can... That could be added?
I just want to get it signed and over because we only have like four weeks to get ready for the audit.
So I don't think they would have a complaint about you adding Lori to that?
They would not.
So you've gotten an email from Gaybridge?
No.
Okay. My understanding is it won't come until sometime in August or later from talking with them.
Right, and it's till October.
Well, my only comment is I think there's been tremendous progress made.
There is.
I think there continues to be tremendous progress made. I would like, I would be more comfortable waiting another month on this letter of engagement, or at least postponing it to start September 1st to see how the current team does.
Personally, I disagree with that.
And your reasoning?
My reason?
Mm-hmm.
Because there is going to be a lot of work getting the year-end journal entries needed for the year-end. There's gonna be questions, I mean, unless it's been current, I mean, there's the amount of special assessment that the program shows, unless it's been found and, you know, changed, is different than what was made. So those are the things that need to be examined and looked at.
So those are the things in the GL that you're talking about, having them look at to see?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and not necessarily GL, it'd be special assessment. You know, go back and, you know, why, why does special assessment say you've received so much? And not put into the GL? So, I mean, there's, there's, I can't go into all of the, spend four years, five years, but there are quite a few year-end adjustments that are made. And you want to make sure that they're done and in there. And then it makes the rest, when you get the packet from Gaybridge, makes it much easier.
Any other comment? Let's do a roll call board on this, please.
Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Trudy?
No.
Laura, yes, we have.
The motion passes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. Any other, okay, so that's done. Public comment? No public comment? Board comment? No board comment? Motion to adjourn at 3:05.
We beat your all in 15 minutes.
Yeah, but it killed the 15 minute, didn't it?